So, good evening, everyone. It's March 14, 2022. Welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting, which is not so regular because we have our scholar athletes and guests. Joe Poffman? Yeah. No. No. Thank you, Dr. Rick. And so, please stand and join us in the pledge. Our pledge reads, "The fire of the United States of America and to the republic stands on the edge of God and here is all with liberty and justice for all." The mission of the White Plains Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to ask you to join us in a moment of silent reflection as we remember Joanne Brogan, elementary teacher at Ridgeway School from 1972 to 2004; Jean Marie Shea, teaching assistant at the high school from 2003 to 2017; Eileen Talent, clerk typist and secretary, Rochambeau, Battle Hill and Post Road and Education House from 1973 to 2001. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have other any announcements? If you can keep them brief. Any announcements from the board?
I'll mention a few things quickly. So, I attended the White Plains High School PTA meeting, which was in-person after a long hiatus from being in-person. And besides first sales at the spiritware table, the administrative team presented and fielded questions. It was very well-attended. There were probably over 40 parents who were there. I also attended the high school musical, Little Shop of Horrors. Saturday night crowd was fabulous. It was more people than I've seen in many years, actually. It was a wonderful production, lots of talent. And congratulations to the cast, the crew, the staff, all the parents who helped. I attended a virtual middle school vaping awareness program, which was really educational and, I have to say, quite eye-opening, presented by our student assistance counselors. I also, this morning, attended one of our Science Elementary Curriculum Committee meetings. And we are getting closer to getting to a resource. We looked at data and we looked at feedback. And the last thing I'll mention is the Westchester Pudnent School Boards Association had a series of roundtables. And so, I participated on the one on communications with respect to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And it was very interesting to interact with other school board members from other communities and find out where they are and what they're doing.
Thank you. Can you, I think you and I were at the PTA council meeting. And again, it's amazing. I think wherever we go, our PTA is not PTA council second to none. And I would be remiss if we did not thank you at every opportunity that we had for all that you do for our students. Thank you. Thank you. You make it look easy. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Next, we want to call our off.
Yes. Welcome to all of our scholar athletes and their families and loved ones. It's great to have you with us here this evening. It's great to be back here together as well to celebrate you. Right now, I'd like to call Mr. Cameron to start us off. Good evening, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Dr. Rick. And thank you to the Board of Ed for allowing us to recognize our student-athlete, individual student-athletes, and our team award winners. This winter was very successful for all of our teams. Our varsity girls' basketball team won the league championship for the first time since 2007. Our varsity boys' ice hockey team and varsity boys into our track team are also league champions. Last week, in the gymnasium, we recognized 10 student-athletes that committed to play sports at the collegiate level, which brings our total number this year to 14 seniors who are playing college athletics next year, which is an outstanding accomplishment. As the athletic director, I'm very proud of our White Plains Tigers for all the championships and individual accomplishments. Just a quick summary of what took place individually for some of our athletes this winter with 10 varsity teams. Forty-seven athletes were recognized as All-League; four athletes recognized for All-Section Honorable Mention; eight athletes recognized for All-Section; and one athlete recognized as All-State. Our ice hockey team had the New York State Division One Player of the Year, Dan Cardoza. And this past weekend, we had two of our girls compete in the New Balance Nationals. Mia Priore in the mile race walk. She finished seventh in the New Balance Nationals. And a week ago, she finished fourth of the New York State Championships, which is... And the other young lady who competed this past weekend in Nationals was Sophia Ginsburg in the two-mile run. And she also competed in the New York State Championship last weekend, too. So, congratulations to Mia and Sophia. And Eric Antonakia, I can't forget you, Eric, in the 55 hurdles. He competed two weeks ago in the New York State meet as well. Certainly a season to remember with all the individual and team awards. But more importantly, tonight, we're recognizing 148 White Plains Tigers, varsity athletes, as New York State Public High School Athletic Association Scholar-Athlete Award winners. Along with 148, six of our 10. So, in order to be a team award winner, you have to have 75% of your team has to have over 90 average. So, six of our 10 varsity teams this winter received a team award. And each, every time we do these awards, every coach sends me a text and asks me if they can go first. And I'm going to go right down the list. Each coach is going to have an opportunity to come down, talk about the team, and call out the students. We're not going to have everybody come down, just like we did in the fall. For those of you who are here, just going to stand up where you are. And then, once we're done, we're going to go out as a team and take a team picture out in the lobby. So, our first team to call up is a team award winner with 33 scholar-athletes, is our Boys Track and Field Team Coach, Dan Furry.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Thank you, Board, for doing this award for us. We're super proud. Track and Field takes great pride in always winning this award. We've done it for many, many years in a row. Super proud of this team this year. It was a great group to be around. Thirty-three scholar-athletes, 19 league champions, two All-County, and a state qualifier. We won the highly competitive 1A championship league title, one of the toughest conferences in all Westchester County. We were second in the Westchester County Championships, and we were sixth in the Section One Championship meet. So, super great year. And we're really proud of all these student-athletes. So, I'm going to read the names now. Patrick Brown, Captain Mason Lang, Jacob Lee, All-County, Albert Maldunden, Ronan Staub, Eric Antonutia, captain, league champion, county champion, state qualifier; Marcus Chung, Abraham Casares, Eli Goldman, Yuki Wannabe, Matt Viola, Mark Rosenthal, Philip Mann, Andrew Rappa, Patrick Stanton, Alex Lonich, Jake Friedman, Freedman, Sean O'Donnell, Aon Krieger, Matt Welling, Joey D'Amelio, Matt Selinger, Aiden Bartlett, Max Polner, Eric Johnson, Jose Guerra, Felix Garcia, Kevin Garcia Felix, Fabian Brown, London Champion, Kieran Keane, William Cowell, Alejandro Mendoza, and Jefferson Tarango. Congratulations.
Congratulations to the Boys Track and Field. You guys can go outside and take a picture with the coach out in the lobby. You're more than welcome to come back in, or you're more than welcome to take off. Our next team with the equal amount of numbers, 33, is our Boys Swim and Dive. Head Coach Patty Gil-Martin is not here tonight. Assistant Coach Josh Eller is going to call the names out. Coach Eller.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to say I'm very proud of the boys on the very hard effort they put this year. I know we've had a lot of tough meets, but I couldn't be prouder of these boys than I am right now. Because it's not all about winning and losing. It's all about how hard they try and all the effort they put into their races. So, now, I'm going to read off the names. First up, Vin Nugan, Jerry Chet, Mason Cachella, Jack Canone, Jackson Bat, Aiden Morgan, Daniel Chung, Ricardo Valencia, Lionel Race, Joseph Farrar, Kevin Inyoke, Aaron Levy, Noah Parafio, Stefan Kamich, Matthew Diaz, Keegan Murray, Edward Molina, Diego Chavez, William Kara, Pedro Vila, Antonio Ruiz, Sebastian Maldonado, Rohan Kumar, Joseph Cartofalsa, Negoz Wolip, Joshua Maisel, Andres Velasquez, Andres Orrel Velasquez, Matthew Fahey, Rory Kirin, Gerardo Sedilio. Oh, and also John Murray, also known as Connor Murray.
Congratulations, Varsity Swim and Dive. Next up is our Girls Track and Field Team, Coach Fred Singleton, with 20 individual awards and also the team recognition.
I want to thank the board for this and recognizing our student-athletes, not only on the Girls and Boys Track Team, but all the teams. The Girls had a very good season this year. We were third in the toughest league in Westchester County. As mentioned before, we had two young ladies, Sophie and Mia, go to the state meet. And Sophie and Mia also went to the Nationals, where Mia Priore was seventh in the nation in the walk. One of the things I'm very proud of with these 20 names I'm about to name is that a great percentage of them are ninth graders. So, we're in good shape, not only on the track, but also in the classroom with this group. I can see my ninth graders over there going, "Get up." All right. We're going to start with Sarah Alzati, who brought her own fan club; April Antonutia; Karen Becerra; Sydney Brumberg; two talented sisters, Sophia Di Pietro and Sydney Di Pietro; Suday Yaral; Isabella Espinoza; Riley Farvey; Vogue Friend; Celia Intorato; Valerie Juarez; Priya Kumar; Gabriela Perez; Gianna Piorin; Carla Restis; Kayla Rhett; Abby Roman; and one of our most outstanding people we've ever had on the track team, Rena Stangahill. These are the powers. Thank you very much. Thank you, girls.
Thank you, Coach Singleton. One more big round of applause for that group. Next up is a team that made a significant amount of progress over the last few years under Coach Dietrich's leadership, who has 19 individual scholar-athletes. Our Varsity Wrestling Team, Coach Dietrich.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Dietrich, and I am the Varsity Wrestling Coach here at White Plains High School. On behalf of the entire White Plains Wrestling Program, I want to thank everyone for all of your continued support and help this past season and always. I am now proud to announce the names of this year's Scholar-Athlete wrestlers. Tenth grader Michael Bellantoni; eleventh grader Vincenzo Bonayuto; ninth grader Jason Cespedes; ninth grader Ryan Chung; ninth grader Yaniv Dardashi Weiss; twelfth grader David Espinoza; ninth grader Christopher George; twelfth grader Alan Hernandez; twelfth grader Anthony Wonka; ninth grader Justin Lopez; twelfth grader Calvin McLaurin; twelfth grader Anthony Plunkett; tenth grader Lucas Road; tenth grader Sebastian Sanchez; ninth grader Luke Shank; ninth grader Tyler Tan; twelfth grader Zantello; ninth grader Leo Torres; and finally, tenth grader Angel Valencia. I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to coach these well-deserving students. Congratulations to all the scholar-athletes here tonight. Thank you.
All right, wrestling team. You guys can head out and take a picture. Next up is Coach Rubenstein, Varsity Ice Hockey. Ice hockey was also a team award winner with 16 individual scholar-athletes. All right. The Boys Varsity Ice Hockey Team are hard-working, dedicated league champions. And not only champions on the ice, but champions in the classroom. Our first person, Ari Bernstein; Daniel Cardozo; Vincent De La Sandro; Mario Di Maria; Justin Esposito; Alex Farbenbriggs; Lev Glasman; Ethan Ilber; Joe Kittelstadt; Josh Levin; Leon Morano; Jason Monti; Philip Shagradsky; Ryan Conrad; George Snyder; and Ryan Ortiz. Congratulations, gentlemen. Best to make this proud. Thanks, Coach. All right, next up, huge improvement in the classroom. It went from four scholar-athletes in the fall. Our Girls Winter Cheer Team had 15 individual scholar-athletes. And Coach Jess Palesko, come on up.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to give a big congratulations to all the teens and athletes here tonight. This group has overcome a lot this season, and I'm very proud of them. They excelled extremely on the mat and in the classroom. We're going to start with sophomore Jessica Bellantoni; senior Tatiana Brown; senior Dalva Cavillo; sophomore Natalie Fenelon; senior Misa Glennon; senior Alyssa Hanrady; freshman Taylor Hemingway Wilkins; freshman Ella Cancello; senior Corey Leek; junior Janice Rayo; junior Anderson Restrepo; two sisters, freshman Anna and Katerina Stromanger; senior Kayana Thompson; and senior Juliette Velasquez. Congratulations, girls.
Congratulations, cheer. Next up is one coach, two teams. Varsity Boys and Girls Bowling, Coach Armageda. One stipend, Dan. Which is normal, Coach.
Good evening. Congratulations also to all the scholar-athletes that were previously called. I had the privilege of coaching the Boys and Girls Bowling Team. We definitely increased our participation and our level of play. Last year, I believe there was, you need to have a full team, you have to have five bowlers per group. Last year, there was, I think, three boys and one girl. This year, we had seven boys and five girls. We had full bowling teams on either side. And on the boy's side, we have two scholar-athletes. We were close to a team that didn't quite make it. But our two scholar-athletes for the boy's side, we have Jack McMahon, please stand up; and Alex Matthews. On the girl's side, we had five participate, and all five made it. So, we are a team award on the girl's side. We have Lucy Barrist; Eleanor Ionis; Somia Sawat; Jolie O'Rourke; and Lily Farbenbriggs. Congratulations, bowlers.
All right, we have two more teams, both individual award winners. Varsity Boys Basketball, Coach Mayfield. Coach Benji here.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to congratulate all the scholar-athletes on a job well-done. And I wish you continued success. And thank you to the administration, the board, for always backing student-athletes. Greatly appreciate it. White Plains Boys Basketball was a season of growth and development. The future is set up to be very successful, both academically and athletically, with six sophomores and three juniors looking forward to returning with that group. We also were three, finished third in the league, had three All-League players and one All-Conference player. They worked hard, although our record wasn't what we always want. They were always in the gym and enthusiastic and willing to work hard. Their future is very bright. This year, we had three qualify and several very close. Our sophomore, Luke Brooks; senior David Di Bernardo; and our All-League Logan McCormick. Thank you. I appreciate everyone. Thanks.
All right, the last team up is our Varsity Girls Basketball Team that had an outstanding season. Like I said earlier, it was the first league championship since 2007. And we had four girls on the team that received individual scholar-athlete awards. It is Karen Surgi here; Isabel McGuire; and Ava Plata; and Annalise Reggio. Good job, girls. Congratulations. All right, so we cleaned out the room pretty much. Dr. Rick, thank you. Board of Ed, thanks. This is always a nice night that you give us an opportunity to recognize all the hard work that the student-athletes put in to the seasons and what they do. And we couldn't do it, obviously, without all the support. And we do thank you for all that. Thanks.
Thank you. And congratulations to everyone, coaches, students, and, most importantly, our parents who make these things happen. You bring them, we love them, and we thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank Mr. Cameron. Thank you so much and all of our coaching staff and the parents and guardians. And I was just talking to Trustee Ray here. When we have our next Scholar-Athlete event, it will be together even a little bit more, where we won't be going out to take pictures in the hallway and we'll be able to have more kids, be able to stay here and celebrate each other. But it is great to be back in person. And huge congratulations to all of our scholar-athletes. It's just a tremendous job in terms of increasing numbers and showing the prowess, not only in their sport, but also in the classroom. So, really, really tip of the hat. Also want to thank our colleagues from Rochambeau for being here this evening. It's Rochambeau night. Thank you. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. And up first, I'm feeling a little tiny. You all right? All right. Up first is, of course, our student representatives, Zaida and Alex. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. We just have some notes from each school, some positive stuff that's happened since the last meeting we had. So, first, we have from George Washington. George Washington, their PTA hosted their first Future Careers Day on February 18th. Students dressed up as their anticipated career choice. They had all field represented and are eager to see their dreams come true. On March 2nd, Ridgeway celebrated Read Across America Day, where families were able to zoom into classrooms and read their favorite stories with students. Supertons Av came in pajamas and brought their favorite stuffed animals to complete the cozy reading day. One of their PTA presidents, Lucy Enselmelo, put together a slideshow that we shared with families. So, Post Road had Black History Month. Students at Post Road Elementary School and... Students at Post Road Elementary School embraced with a fist research black Americans who may contribute to the history. They created PowerPoint presentations which were recorded and presented and aired during daily morning announcements. They also had Kindness Week/Super Bowl Week. They celebrated Kindness Week, which coincided with our annual Super Bowl. One way they showed their kindness for each other is caring for the community. This was a friendly competition between grade levels to bring in as many food items as possible and defeat those who are food insecure in our community. They collected 2,200 food items. As a result, their post-food pantry, also known as the market, has now reopened to serve our school community. They also had the 100th Day of School. Their kindergarten friends celebrated the 100th Day of School last month by dressing up as 100-year-olds engaging in lots of fun 100-day activities, especially in the area of math. Their fourth and fifth grade Boys and Girls Basketball Team had a great season and played against other four elementary schools. We are proud of their performance in every game, especially demonstrating good sportsmanship. So Church Street enjoyed Spirit Week. On Silly Sock Day, they had fun while collecting socks for those in need. And as part of Spirit Week, they also had Career Day. The Church Street Champions dressed up for their future careers. Parents and junior achievement organizations also inspire students with presentations about their careers. Their third, fourth, and fifth graders had a virtual visit with author Stacy McMillan. They look forward to the also visit for our K2 students in April. The first grades are kicking off the planting season by planting some lettuce seeds later this week. They also are sprucing up our garden with a generous grant from the Friends of White Plains.
Hello, everyone. I'm Zaida Polanco. I am the other co-president of White Plains High School along with Alex. So we have some updates from Amerenick Avenue Elementary School. During the month of February, we focus on character traits that helps create positive peer friendships. For the month of March, we are currently focused on ways we show empathy. We had amazing participation as we celebrated PARP with month-long activities as we encouraged everyone to read together. During the month, students participated in fun activities in school as they logged their reading times as we worked to meet our school-wide reading goals. Classes with the most reading minutes will be celebrated this month. We are so incredibly proud of both our MAS girls and boys' basketball teams. They have been working hard, practicing weekly, and becoming a strong team on and off the count. A special thanking to backyard sports, our families, and our MAS staff coaches for making this opportunity so meaningful for our students. We had a One Book, One School activity as we invited a guest author to meet with all classes. Together, we learned about the writing process as we read the book, If I Could Create My Own School. As a school, MAS will be celebrating its 100th birthday in the spring. Stay tuned for our celebration plans as we use this book to inspire our own ideas as we think about what MAS would be like in the next 100 years. And Eastview Middle School, Eastview had the following activity for the month of March. March 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, they had a school trip to see the movie The Tiger Rising. In addition to the movie, students are also working on a video presentation of Eastview on Broadway. The video is scheduled to air at the end of the month, and in-person spring performance of Eastview on Broadway is forthcoming. We will select a date this week. The movie was selected because all students read the book in the fourth grade. In Rochambeau, they want to congratulate Rochambeau students Richard Ramirez, Randy Chachuka, Kevin Mendoza, Ashley Okendo, Jacob Tirado, and Naomi Garcia. They were our February Directors Challenge winners for their achievement in the area of social studies. They received a special luncheon compliments of social studies teacher Elise Oluca. We would like to give a big shout-out to our music teacher, Gary Cassidy. He did an incredible job as the Pitt musical director this weekend in the production of Little Shop of Horrors. We also would like to take this opportunity to congratulate social studies teacher Bill Krebs on his official retirement today. He has been an integral part of our school community for 25 years, touching the lives of so many along the way. The students and staff at Rochambeau wish him all the best. We are currently in the process of planning a career day that will take place next month on Friday, April 8th.
So at White Plains, of course, we presented Little Shop of Horrors, which had approximately 300 people there per night, so that was incredible. Of course, as you know, I know today marks the first day of our spring sports, which includes baseball, softball, track, and lacrosse, or outdoor track. Today, we had two very important and equally moving assemblies for both Black History Month and Women's History Month in our media center, where we had some amazing speakers, steppers, Bollywood dancers, and poets. Next week, we're partnering with the PTA. Highlights in the high school are having Mr. Grimes talk about internet and social media safety. And of course, our junior prom will be held on the 3/25.
Last month, we had the Avid College Fair. The NHS induction for juniors will be coming up soon. Our AP art students will be holding their portfolio exhibitions on March 28th. We celebrated Pi Day today on March 14, 3.14.
March 14.
Yes. And senior prom is on June 2nd, so we are also preparing for that. And that is all for today. Thank you.
Congratulations on your award from the African-American Men of Westchester.
I sit on that scholarship. Just between you.
Sophia, do you want to come up? I'd like to welcome Sophia this evening. She'd like to give the board an update on our sustainability efforts here at White Plains High School.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Sophia Alexandra. I'm a junior at White Plains High School and come to you on behalf of our Advocates for the Earth Club and Westchester Green County, USA, a youth-led climate organization as an executive council member. I'm here to talk to you about some exciting developments regarding the prospect of solar panel installation at White Plains High School. New York State has introduced a program that provides incentives to project developers to increase the number of solar projects in the state. We're currently looking at a program particularly with particularly attractive incentives called Community Solar and Climate Service Territory. In this project, project developers invest capital to build, own, and operate solar projects. Connen receives the power and pays premium for every kilowatt hour generated by the project. Hosts schools do not invest capital and are not required to purchase electricity. Solar panels will be installed at any available location in the school, like rooftops, above parking lots, brandy unused space. This project does not require White Plains High School to make monetary investment or commitment to purchase power or maintenance responsibilities. There are significant benefits to hosting community solar. For example, White Plains High School will receive significant lease payments from the solar system developer. It can obtain cover playgrounds and parking. Community members will receive a decrease in their electricity bills. Students will be able to learn about solar energy through seeing it happen in real time. And of course, the most important reason, the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. It is expected that the installation of solar panels will result in a reduction of about 2.3 million kilowatt hours per year for White Plains High School. In addition to all that, this installation of solar panels would make White Plains High School a leader in the fight against climate change. Earlier this year, I was able to collaborate with their Advocates for the Earth presidents, Illichis Vorbach and Rasha Elvakeel, Dr. Freeman Mack, and Mr. Sofinelli to make White Plains High School carbon neutral for the 2021-22 school year, making it one of the only schools in the country to reach this status. This carbon neutrality was able to be achieved through offsetting our emissions, which manifested through investing in sustainable projects overseas in developing countries. I'm currently working with my peers over at Westchester Green County, USA, on a pledge we call the Westchester Pledge that more heavily focuses on a strong reduction efforts to have Westchester schools become 50% net zero by 2030 and 100% net zero by 2045. Strong reduction efforts like the installation of these solar panels will allow White Plains High School to reach this goal much more efficiently. Offsetting is great, but it's not going to get the job done. Myself, along with my peers and Advocates for the Earth strongly, strongly support this initiative. In terms of other reduction initiatives from our school, we are currently preparing to install LED light bulbs in all classrooms, and Advocates for the Earth is working with Tree Punish to plant trees around the school. If you want to support our club, we invite you to our Upcycle Fantasy Fashion Show at 4:00 PM on March 18th at the White Plains High School Little Theater. Tickets are completely free. If you want to learn more about Westchester Green County, USA, and the Westchester Pledge and its implications for White Plains High School, contact me at our April 2nd virtual conference, where I'll be hosting a breakout session that will discuss it more in depth. Thank you.
That's so... Thank you. Very eloquent. Very... Thank you. One of our students, really proud of you guys.
Got a little bit more intimate. Couple of, just a couple of quick updates. Of course, we sprang ahead yesterday. Today is the Fourth of Pi Day. And thanks to everybody who participated in a lot of really fun activities with the kids to celebrate Pi Day. And St. Patrick's Day Parade has also been rescheduled in White Plains on the 26th of March. And I know you're looking forward to it, and I am too. Sunday is the first day of spring. Again, congratulations, Little Shop of Horrors. We have a Lion King coming up next week, so that'll be exciting, too. And I also have on my list of notes tonight to thank the PTA. You know, over the last two years, I think we have worked closer with the PTA than ever before. And it's been a tremendous pleasure working together, not just with us, but with everybody in the PTA. So I want to offer and extend my thanks. Today, also, not lost on me, two years ago today, the Monday, was the day that schools closed. And it really feels good to be here tonight, even though it's an intimate crowd. But it feels good to be in person. It feels good to see every day our community continuing to get stronger and more comfortable as we're moving, but still vigilant, as we're moving past the pandemic. We're never going to lose, I don't think, I hope, that level of vigilance that we need to be ready so we don't get caught flat-footed. But at the same time, you know, we are working very, very hard to bring our children back to a place of more of a typical experience at school. So in-person events, in-person activities, and field trips, end-of-year activities we're planning, all in person. Visiting schools for parents and guardians. Some parents and guardians, you know, of our youngest children have never been able to walk in in our buildings. So all of these, all of these themes, these important components of the school experience are coming back. We're really, we're really happy about that. We have a reopening committee meeting this Wednesday, and I am going to be letting the committee know, I guess I'd like to go first. I'm going to be letting the committee know that we're going to pause the remaining meetings. And of course, if need be, we can bring the committee, reactivate the committee, and come back together again. But at this moment, right now, we are in a position where we are able to move forward, which is fantastic. And of course, you know, we're going to continue to notify our communities when we have identified cases of COVID-19. But as you know, and as you've seen over the last several weeks, we're looking at, you know, thank God, in single digits in many instances. So this is all very good news. I had the opportunity last week to go to Albany and to advocate for pre-K funding for all children throughout the state of New York. We saw the draft one-house budgets coming out from the Senate and for the Assembly. Both those budgets contain additional funding for pre-K. It will be interesting to see, and we're continuing to advocate for more money for pre-kindergarten all throughout the state of New York in the executive budget, which we're anticipating to be out in a couple of weeks. Another point of pride, on Friday morning, I learned that the White Plains City School District was part of a White House fact sheet in how the American Rescue Plan funds were being utilized across the country to support children and to support communities in a sustainable fashion. And very proud and congratulations to everybody. I texted the board early in the morning. I said, "I don't know about you, but this is the first time I'm in a White House fact sheet," which was pretty great. And we're looking forward to, of course, cooler, cleaner, fresher air in all of our facilities in the years to come. On this evening's agenda, we also have a calendar for 2022, 2023. And it's important to note, this is CSEA holidays. Are part of that one single-page calendar now. So hopefully, that will eliminate any confusion that maybe we saw in the past. We have the, as a reminder, the budget vote and Board of Education election coming up on Tuesday, March 17th, right around the corner. May. Thursday the 17th is St. Patrick's Day. We're not going to vote on Thursday. May, thank you. And then this evening, we have the preliminary proposed budget. But before I do, I just want to draw some attention to some other accolades. At the high school, freshman Lance Anthony won the Poetry Out Loud Regional Competition and advanced to the New York State Finals. Congratulations to Lance. Our seniors had their artwork exhibited at the Katana Museum of Art throughout February, and pictures of their work has been posted on the district's Facebook page. And congratulations to all of those artists. On March 3rd, White Plains High School students Rena Stanglini, Natalie Dove, and Esther Chan, along with their orchestra teachers, performed at the commemoration ceremony marking two years since the first confirmed COVID-19 case in Westchester County. And this was held at the county building and by request of the county executives. So that was a great opportunity for our kids. And then, of course, as was mentioned earlier, on March 7th, we hosted College Signing Day here at White Plains High School. We had 40... That day, I think, 10 students signed. And we're at 14 now, which is really something to note. And congratulations to all of those students, student athletes, but also to their parents and guardians, because, as we all know, you don't get to that level of performance and achievement without having a very strong support system. And faculty and staff members and coaches and support staff here at the school as well who have helped get them to where they are today. So congratulations to everybody. Now, unless there are any questions. Preliminary proposed budget. You can. You sure can. It's the next one.
The board will entertain comments from the public committee issue with a time limit of three minutes. Oops. Sorry. With a time limit of three minutes per person, a maximum time of 25 minutes, please respect the dignity of individuals, and please feel free to contact the administration with any questions that you may have. And please state your name.
Hello. My name is Lily Moore. I am a proud parent of three elementary students in the White Plains City School District, including one student in the ICT program. Thank you for having me this evening. I want to start with immense gratitude for the experience we have had in this school district, particularly regarding the teachers and support staff who have guided and continue to guide our journey. While the efforts and dedication reaching far beyond the school day may not make it on a bar chart as a data point, the experience created by those on the ground floor is real, and the impact on our children is profound in nature. So for my family, we have tremendous gratitude because we've had a phenomenal experience in White Plains. As a parent, teacher, and union cabinet member, and tap dancer, just kidding. Not that part. Go back. As a parent, teacher, and union cabinet member, I am so proud of all the ways we have advocated as a district and as a union to get fully funded. I look forward to hearing the superintendent's budget and how it supports all of our learners. I hope for continued dialogue, finding ways to collaboratively work together to ensure that all of our kids benefit from our fully-funded schools. Thank you for your partnership. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Karen McCormick Lyons. For the purpose of this, I reside at 500 North Street. I just thought it was really fitting to say thank you to everyone. I can't believe that it's two years, and we've been through so much together. And it was so fitting that on Friday, this district was placed on the White House fact sheet as ARP stars. So thank you to the people who do the math and the people who do the thinking and to the board who have supported that work. We're really grateful. I also just wanted to thank the middle school PTA for funding our grants for critical literacy, because the museum is opening, and I hope you all join us soon. And last but not least, I had ARP stars, the PTA. Books! Yes! So that was the other thing that is fitting. So the books brought us through the pandemic, and we're coming out the other side with more books, over 40,000 of them. Stay tuned. That was it. Thank you.
Slides, like 80,000 books in two weeks. Started out with about 115 slides, down to 35. I do, in all seriousness, I want to thank everybody who was part of this process, and that is everybody. In our school district, we really endeavor to have every voice be part of the budget construction process. And as you know, and as I always say, there is not a singular budget time of year. It's all year long. And the planning that goes into our long-range plan, the planning that goes into our long-range fiscal planning, our strategic planning, all of that work comes together and gels when we have our proposed budget tonight. I am very, very proud of this budget that we're proposing to the Board of Education for its consideration. proud of this budget that we're proposing to the Board of Education for its consideration, and then potentially for the city of White Plains for its consideration in May. Just an agenda for this evening's review, and I'm going to move us through this. Now, it's important to remember that all of this information is available on the district's website in All About the Budget section. And as much detail as you would like to review the budget, it's all there for you. It is really important to us that every member of our community has access to all aspects of the district's finances, as well as our planning materials as we put our budgets together. So we start out with our strategic plan, we move forward then with goals and objectives. And this is goal, these are goals and objectives at every level of the organization. They all feed into the strategic plan and lead back to the mission, vision, and values of the school district. I don't need to go through all the reasons why planning is important. There are so many aspects that are not within our control, that can have an impact on our fiscal planning. That is why it is important to control what we can. And making sure that we have sustainable plans for not just this budget cycle, but also the out years, is important to all the work that we do. So anything from a turbulent economy, which as all of you know, we are anticipating interest rates are going to be increased, and we are anticipating some type of economic shift in the years to come, whether it be recession, what will that look like? We don't know. So as we plan for the future and the stability of the school district, it's important to recognize that we have to try and figure out as much as we can what things will look like in the future. Efficient budgeting, making sure that we are reallocating resources where we need to, making sure that for the future, we're on solid ground and all the decisions that we make are sustainable, and we recognize that those decisions are not just about today, but they're also about the future. We want to always maintain our programming and seek to change where resources are going in the school district before we are cutting programming or reducing programming. So we recognize that all the decisions that we're making this year are going to have impacts in the years to come, and we do that each year. As I mentioned, our vision, our mission, vision, and core values are all part of the planning process, as well as our goals each year in the strategic plan. And you'll be able to sort of identify all of our strategic planning goals in the budget. So whether you're looking at the instructional component of the budget or the non-instructional component of the budget, you'll be able to draw back to those goals and objectives. I actually want to ask Anne to talk a little bit about this slide, because this is an important aspect for all of us to remember.
What do you need, everyone? Thank you. So what this slide depicts is what has transpired over the past 15 years with school districts. In 2008, it was the Great Recession, and we had economic downturns and layoffs. And then in 2012, they instituted the tax levy cap. And the state then enacted the gap elimination and just took monies away from all school districts, just right off the top. And then they also didn't comply with the campaign for fiscal equity and that court ruling, and that's our foundation aid. And then you roll it forward to 2021, 22, 10 years, and the state now is committed to fully funding foundation aid for $14.1 million that the White Plains City School District will receive over these three years. And they have also committed, the federal government, to giving us, we're committed to receiving $16.5 million one-time-only federal funds. And in 2122, the district had reduced its tax levy cap by $5.2 million and its overall budget by $3.62. And then for the coming year, we're looking towards, you know, permanent state aid funding, another reduction that's being recommended for the tax levy cap of $6.4 million. We understand that the one-time-only federal funds will disappear, but we weren't counting on them because they're not reoccurring. We're hoping for the implementation of the Master Facilities Plan. And yes, we understand that there could potentially be an economic downturn, and through all our fiscal planning, we're poised hopefully to manage that and continue to manage that.
So, well, over the last five years, we've looked for ways to continue to return dollars, if you will, to the taxpayer. And that's been something that's been very important to the Board of Education, very, very important to the school community. We recognize that in years past, just about 86% of the budget was through property taxes. And only now has it been reduced somewhat with the fully, the full funding of foundation aid. Everything is always in a cycle of improvement. And whether it be Dr. Hand working in curricular areas, or whether it be Devout Garden working in PPS areas, or whether it be Scott Pepper overseeing and working to bring efficiencies to human resources, whether it be Anne in Business and Operations Office, or whether it be in my office, where we're working sort of with everybody, we're always looking to improve. And that goes from district office all the way down to every one of our classrooms. We recognize that every day is a new day to try to do a better job. And that's what our budget allows us to do as well. And you'll see here, we have a number of reviews that are taking place, and they're in different stages of review. And if next steps in 22, 23, we're looking at a full review of our inclusive practices, as well as response to intervention and protocols district-wide. These you see every year. These are the principles, the guiding principles in terms of developing our plans. So first, we want to protect our instructional core, making sure that all of the opportunities that our children have remain. And not only do they remain, but that they change and evolve and they grow year to year to provide them with the best possible experiences we can. We evaluate needs versus wants. We make decisions related to what we can do, based on what we need to do. We look to preserve our investments, like our facilities, and make sure that we're preventing costs where we can by preventative maintenance and the like. We're always looking for efficiencies. We're always looking to be able to share services. We do find efficiencies regularly, as you have seen over the years, as well as opportunities to share services to reduce costs. We delay program impact wherever possible, and then, of course, reduce and restructure, don't eliminate. We know, you've all lived through this, you know how very difficult it is to bring something back once it's gone. So we always look to be able to preserve, make changes where we need to, but wherever possible, not eliminate programming. So we have gone through the instructional budget, the non-instructional budget. Even before that, we did our long-range plan update, and now we're here to talk about the proposed budget. And it is a point of pride. We have, for years, advocated for the full funding of foundation aid for the district. We have said that if we were able to achieve full funding, that we would do what we could to reduce the burden to the taxpayer. And now, you know, this Board of Education and the school district has a great track record of fiscal responsibility, being conservative wherever we possibly can to save money wherever we possibly can. And this year, we are putting forward a budget that not only brings with it all of the goals and objectives of our long-range plan, our strategic plan, but also brings with it no tax increase. And, you know, one of the first things that we think about when we say no tax increase is, well, does that set us up for future years for a problem? And no, it doesn't. We've gone through the numbers, we've made sure we've reviewed everything in terms of what our projections are, and we are confident that this year, we are able to bring a budget forward that supports all of our programming and also supports every one of our taxpayers. And we learned that because the tax rate, right, rate, not levy, because the tax rate has gone down here in the city, that in fact, some of our residents may actually see, dare I say, a tax reduction. Depends, of course, on your property taxes, it depends on where you are in terms of your assessments. But it is good news. It is good news for the White Plains City School District, it's good news for the community and the city of White Plains. And again, it didn't happen by accident. It happened through advocacy, it happened through smart planning, through Board of Education and leadership that has been stable and recognizes how important it is to plan in all of the avenues. But we are very proud to be able to bring this forward this year. And again, thinking about how things have changed, you can see the real property taxes, the percentage of which has borne by the taxpayer has gone down. And that essentially is your infusion of foundation aid. This slide's full, Anne.
So as Dr. Rick had pointed out, the appropriations budget, the amount that's supported by the tax levy, it has gone down from 86% to 80%. And the amount that the state and feds are supporting of our budget is now at the 15%, when it had only been 10%. So that is significant. The tax levy cap was instituted in 2012, and it was dubbed the 2% cap, which it's not. It's actually an eight-step complex calculation, as you can see, you know, the slide is a little overwhelming. But the 2% cap is on the allowable growth factor, that is lesser of 2% or CPI. And for the year ending 2021, that CPI was 4.7%. So therefore, we're capped at the 2%. The maximum allowable tax levy as prescribed by law for that calculation really comes out to 3.24%. So that the district could raise the levy by $6.4 million. And the Board has, as we talked about, has committed to reducing that levy 2.1% through the use of the Vet Service Reserve Fund, as it had been doing, and then to also further reduce it by 4.3 million to a zero tax levy increase due to the full phase in of foundation aid.
So, yep, the good news is the state is investing in education. I always love that, and you've noticed this every year, whoever, it doesn't matter who it is, but whoever is in charge will say, "And this year, we're investing historic dollars in education." Because if you increase it $1, it's historic dollars, right? Every year, it goes up. But this year is truly special. This year is also an election year. To see foundation aid being fully funded is outstanding. We also know, and we're anticipating, that there could potentially even be additional changes when the one-house budget does come out in a few weeks. That could include additional funds for pre-K. We know it's likely going to include additional opportunities for mental health grants, which very, very important, right, of course, for all of our children, as well as other potential opportunities, including things like farm-to-table and electric school buses. So again, just kind of going through what this looks like in terms of fully funding foundation aid. With regard to expense-driven aids, the proposals to fully fund all those expense-driven aids as well, transportation, building, those, instructional material aids. So where are expenses? They're exactly where you would expect them to be. And again, this is another point of pride for really everybody, I think, is that our, the vast majority of our expenditures are in program. And that's where they should be. They should be touching children in classrooms, making sure that their experiences are robust, making sure that they have access to the highest-quality professionals who are going to be able to support them, whether they be classroom teachers, whether they be special area teachers, whether they be specialists in support personnel, helping professionals, you name it. There are a number of people who impact our children on any given day, and we are a people business. So the vast majority of those funds are going, the programmatic funds are exactly where we want to see our dollars distributed. With regard to demographic data, and this is not new, you've seen this before, you've seen the slide before, we've talked about this. The projections right now, both in White Plains and really everywhere, are that enrollment is declining, live births have declined. And really, the increases that we're seeing in population are due to people either moving in, or the decreases are people moving out. We lost, New York State, lost a lot of people throughout the pandemic for a variety of reasons, I'm sure. The question remains, will we, as a state, have the fortitude to attract them back? Or attract additional folks? And we've been advocating as well for things like attractive teachers from across the country, ways that we can partner with our colleagues to attract more teachers so that you're bringing more opportunity back or into the state of New York. And the same goes true with residents as well. So taking a look at all of our staff, our full-time equivalency, and you can see, we just break everything out here, so you can see the numbers of folks who are supporting our students. You can see our adopted budget in 21, 22, modified budget for 21, 22, and our preliminary budget for 22, 23. Remember, there was a period of time that we held on positions. We wanted to, again, be conservative, we wanted to be smart, we didn't know what was going to be coming, so we held on increasing those positions until we knew that we were in solid foundation, I'm sorry, solid fiscal footing to be able to reintroduce those positions. The positions that we're introducing in this budget are, again, all populated in our long-range plan, have all been part of that planning process all along, and will go a long way to supporting our students. You will see that a number of helping, the vast majority are helping professionals. So you can see psychologists, you can see support personnel, which is really outstanding. Additional budget factors that always come into play, employee benefits, and we've done really well in terms of our health care costs, our increases in our health care costs. We've done really well in terms of TRS and ERS. In terms of debt service, we have two serial bonds, they're one, they're going to be falling off in a period of a few years, which is part of what we're talking about in terms of our master plan, our facility projects. We have a variety of projects taking place, both part of our master plan, part of our one-time-only spending, and then we have capital projects as well. We have tax cert refunds this year, predicted to be a little bit higher than they have been so far, but we do think, you know, in the future, they'll be coming back again. We really lost a year or so during the pandemic, so we anticipate, we plan for about $5 million. Yeah. And we're below that so far this year, but we'll see. Again, personnel costs are all in accordance with our collective bargaining agreements. And other contractual things to think about, we're all thinking about it, utilities, gas, energy, right, very expensive. And it dovetails nicely, we have one of our students, Sophia, here this evening, talking about ways in which we can continue to increase our sustainability capacity, our capacity for sustainability here in the district as well. So breaking it out, the APC, right, that three parts, so you have your administrative, your program, and your capital components of the budget. And as I mentioned before, where you want to see is that program be big and robust, and the other two areas as small as you can make it. We break it out this way as well, because a lot of times, when you think about administration, you might think about administrators. There's a lot more that goes in that administrative side of the budget, and it's important for folks to understand that. It's all this program, and of course, capital. So just breaking that out this way, you can get a sense of what's really incorporated. And for an organization our size, there's a lot that goes into all of those components. So what happens when a budget fails? This is more of a superstitious set of slides that we keep in here every year, just to remind everybody. We have been so fortunate in the past, blessed with community support. I think, you know, my hope is that, and what I've been hearing so far, is that as people see this year's proposed budget, that they will be pleased with it. But when a budget fails, there are consequences, just like with any election. And the Board of Education has the opportunity to bring the budget back, reconfigure it if they so choose, or and then put it out again for a second vote, or keep it the same, put it out again for a second vote. Really depends on how things look. If the budget is unsuccessful that second time, then you go to a contingency budget. Well, Joe, you're not increasing taxes. How could you, how could you have a problem? Well, we would still see a loss of about $1 million in a contingency situation, which is, of course, problematic, right? That means somewhere in the organization, you need to make a reduction of about $1 million. So our hope is that, as we have in the past, we will communicate clearly, effectively, and regularly with our community, and I'll make sure that I don't make the mistake of saying the wrong month in the future, and make sure everybody comes out, May 17th, 2021, from 12 to 9, to participate, what? 2022. What did I say, 2023? Oh, jeez. 2022, sorry, from 12 to 9 p.m. And we also have a couple of other, we also have a couple of other questions on the ballot as well. And this year, we were very excited to share with the community the outcome of what has really been years and years worth of work, of course, slowed down, but not stopped, but slowed down by the pandemic of our master plan. And our master plan has a number of opportunities for our district to improve our infrastructure, and really touches the entire school district. and really touches the entire school district. In Phase One, we really have three recommendations. One, as we spoke about already, is the HBAC, right? We have all of the ventilation and cooling that would take place all throughout the district. And part of that is going to be funded through a grant. And I always like to thank and mention former Assemblyman David Buckwald for that support there. And then, of course, through the American Rescue Plan, as well as some additional one-time-only grant funds and funds from us as well, and that would be zero cost to the taxpayer. The renovations and improvements in educational program space of seventy-one point four million dollars. And this is part of, again, Phase One of the master plan, would be tax neutral, which means it won't increase your taxes as a community member. So how do you do that? Well, you do that by taking advantage of debt from previous projects, previous bonds that is falling off to keep the costs the same, keep the costs static. So we'll be able to complete those, and there'll be much more to come, of course, in terms of what this is going to look like. But we'll be able to do this at a tax-neutral position, which we are really excited about. And then the third aspect, the third question, is the establishment of a new capital reserve, which will allow us to reserve up to fifty million dollars over the next fifteen years. And this, of course, has no increase to the taxpayer either. So, next steps, and thankfully, the dates are all right there. We just finished up tonight on the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. I am unsure as to whether or not we will need a workshop. We always put this workshop in, and typically, we cancel it because we don't need to have a meeting next Monday as well. But we'll get back to you on that after we speak with the Board of Education. But we will continue to be talking about and sharing aspects, not just of the proposed preliminary budget, but also, of course, the master plan. So very exciting as we make our way to May and the school budget and school Board of Education election. Questions? Does anybody have any questions?
Joe, can you give some examples of non-contingent expenses that could be eliminated for just a few days?
Yeah, sure, that would be really, go ahead, it would be any increase, go ahead.
So it could be facility use, and things that are within the facility's budget. That's not mean health and safety would be eliminated. Could be certain, you know, supplies and materials for students. And also, it could be raises that are not part of our union agreements, so along those lines. So, and you have to comply also, there's two things. Removal of non-contingent expenses that are required, as well as complying with an administrative cap, which that ratio requires you to match what the prior year cap was. So you're removing things to get to meet those two criteria.
I recognize that almost everybody here has seen this presentation three times already, so thank you. And thanks again very much for your attention.
Now we'll move into our summary action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Item C, and we are grateful for the following donations. Books and supplies from the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution for our elementary schools. Five thousand from the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools for programs at the high school and Church Street School. Teacher materials and a viola from Susan Shaw for the music program. Three thousand dollars from Mr. and Mrs. Mark Varian for the Rita Varian Art Scholarship. And nine hundred and eighteen dollars from various donors for the Philip Barnett Memorial Scholarship Fund. Thank you very much.
Do we have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
We have no individual action items, we are going to board discussion. We have our homeless policy and regulations for first reading, so we're charged to do that. And yeah, bring back any questions? Next, we'll go to our board committee reports. We can start with, I guess, finance.
Well, we have the finances, we got the external order there, we did very well. No corrections, no delays, and anything on the budget, we pray three times.
And we had our HR meeting, and we discussed things of a personal nature, but we have a meeting.
We had a great presentation on the pre-K program. We had an overview of numbers, locations, program. We were able to purchase a brand-new reading program for all the sites, which incorporates SEL, as well as a strong vocabulary piece, number sense, literacy skills. We're supplementing that program with foundations and programs we need for kindergarten and first grade level, which is great, it's the most transmission. I think we have two hundred and ninety-eight students taking advantage of our pre-K program. And then, you know, they're coming in with a strong oral language development initiative for us, which any kindergarten teacher would be thrilled to have. It's great, man.
Thank you so much, Jane, for that.
Special education. So special education, Sarah Hall, who is one of our assistant principals and oversees our guidance services, gave us an update on the guidance program, elementary, middle school, and high school. She also spoke about the new freshman seminar, which is part of the budget. And also, we had an update on the hiring of new PPS staff, people personnel staff, which is also part of the budget.
Thank you, and anything else?
I just wanted to add, it was interesting that, you know, we call it guidance, but in fact, a few years ago, those counselors are now classified as counselors, which they're school counselors. So that's part of our continuing efforts in SEL, social emotional learning, and to really support our students. You know, I had a neighbor who told me the other day that his sixth-grade son was, he found him sitting home crying in his bedroom because he was afraid of nuclear war. So everything in our society filters down to our kids, and we need to make sure that we're supporting them and our staff so that we can have a healthy environment to the extent possible.
I think too, with that, Charlie, you know, you think, we might think as adults that we're not impacted, but in many ways, we are impacted. We don't always see it as readily. And then you realize one day, you know what? You know, I was impacted. There was a need that I had, there was a void, so it's really very important for all students and staff. So before we go, John Shepherd. Thank you. John Mishabes, thank you, good to see you. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Miss Tate.